Good morning, I'm Kaitlyn with Wiregrass Daily News and I'm here with Mr. Derek Tiller, who is running for City Commissioner, Seat 2.
So grateful to be here.
Welcome, thank you for coming. So Derek, as a candidate for City Commissioner, Seat 2, what do you see, what is your vision for the city in the next five to 10 years?
So, you know, as a commissioner, not only do you vote on policies and ordinance for the complete city, but your job is to fight for your district. And a lot of times we see within District 1 and District 2 that they are underfunded due to whether it's crime rate, due to the poverty rate of that area. And so my love for District 2 is the reason why I'm running to fight for those funds. And so within the next five to 10 years, I see District 2 really beginning to thrive. We have ACOM in our district now. We just redid the Wiregrass Park area. We have the NFL field. And so I really believe our district is going in the right direction if we can just continue to fight for funding and put funding in that. And so within the next five to 10 years, I see economic development happening in District 2. I see the whole base of District 2 beginning to change, house values going up, if we continue to push and fight for those funding.
What would you say are the district's greatest strengths and the greatest challenges?
I think community. So I think District 2 has a great level of community, looking out for each other, caring for each other, loving and knowing the neighbor. I think the difficulty is access. When you do not know, it's difficult to do better. And so a lot of times because of the area, people become a product of their environment. And so if we can get those resources in that area to show them that there's more than what they see. There's a whole world out there. There's a whole community out there outside of District 2. And so I think exposure will help District 2 and the individuals and the community members in District 2.
How will you prioritize the needs of residents while balancing competing interests?
So I think the biggest thing is figuring out what are the needs of the constituents in District 2. A lot of times we're doing stuff to meet a need that we don't even know the answer to the need. I used the example during COVID, an organization bought so much hand sanitizer for the school system. And they were like, well, that's not what we needed. And they thought they were doing a good thing, but that did not satisfy the need. And so I believe we should go to the constituents and say, hey, what do you need? What resources are you needing in order to make it to the next level, in order to move and shift up? When you find out what they need, prioritize those needs. And so you prioritize those needs and explain to them, hey, these are the needs that we're saying, but this is a priority. And so right now, we're not discrediting number five, but number one is the priority. And so we need to put funds in number one so that we can get to number five. And even with the district as a whole, you know, downtown right now is a priority for the city. And so letting our constituents understand this is a priority that is going to bring revenue to our city, which is in return is going to help District 2. And so this is a priority, but we are not discrediting or ignoring what you need. And so I think communication is simply the key.
What strategies would you implement to create new job and business opportunities in your district?
So when you ride around District 2, you see a lot of empty buildings. I can count off four right now, one off of Columbia Highway, one off of Sixth Avenue. There are multiple buildings that could be utilized for businesses. I think as Commissioner, it is our job to figure out what businesses would fit there. Not only fit there, but provide jobs for our community. When we pull up the census, you see a huge percentage of individuals do not have transportation. And it does not break it out by district, but I can bet you District 1 and District 2 is the individuals that have that high level of no transportation. And so accessibility is important. So by putting those businesses in those already vacant facilities could offer jobs which in return will stimulate the economy, which in return will allow them to bring value to our community. And so I think as District 2 Commissioner, it's our job to connect with the Chamber of Commerce, have those conversations of what organizations, what businesses can we put in those buildings that they'll thrive, grow, and offer workforce development to our community?
How do you plan to support small businesses within your district?
So again, because District 2's crime rate is so high and the demographic of District 2, a lot of businesses do not want to come to District 2. Fear of whether it's crime, whether it's the environment, so forth. And so I believe in order to do this, you have to begin to offer incentives for small businesses. Not only incentives for small businesses that will come, but those that are currently there. Because again, accessibility is huge. And so making sure that small businesses are seen, making sure that they have access to those funds that run through the city or grants that are coming through the city. And then I think number three, making sure we provide them resources to opportunities of funding. So if we hear about funding that's coming down from the state level, we're telling them about it, we're communicating it to them so that they can apply. Maybe the city can't apply for it, but as a business owner, maybe you can apply for those funds. And so making sure that they are seen, making sure that they are heard, making sure that they are poured into, really pushing small businesses, so individuals in District 2 to support those small businesses, whether there's a grocery store, whether there's a clothing store, whatever it may be, making sure that they value it and take care of it. And again, I believe when a small business is valued, appreciated, and poured into, they'll pour back into the community. And I don't think that is the bridge that we've connected, that we have small businesses that are not pouring back into District 2. And so reinforcing of the love and the appreciation to those businesses so that in return, they'll pour back into District 2.
Absolutely. What steps would you take to ensure the local economy stays resilient in the face of changing markets?
So I think again, you know, pouring back into local. A lot of times we do not realize, like when we purchase stuff online and we're purchasing it from Amazon or we're purchasing it from Walmart.com, the city does not always benefit from those funds. And it's because, you know, there's no way to really track that information. And so really pushing local, that if we can get our local economy extremely strong, yes, it may be a little higher, but in return, it's going to benefit our city, it's going to benefit our district. So you paying an extra $5 to benefit our district, I think that's value. And so by you investing what you have into our local businesses, when the return will invest into our economy, when the return will be a return on your investment. And so again, I think bringing that knowledge and that understanding that it's a full circle.
Right.
And we want our dollars to stay in our city compared to going out to where we won't have access to.
Yeah, stay inside Ross Clark Circle with you.
Yes. Noted, I'm gonna add that to my.
You're welcome. How do you plan to enhance public safety while treating all the residents equally?
So I think that is a very two-part answer for District 2. And so District 2 is made up of the elderly constituents who have been there for 30, 40, 50 years. And now you have a different demographic that is beginning to take it over. And so you have this battle between your younger individuals and this elder population to where they're too loud, they're always outside, they're doing, you know, all of these different things. And so while listening to them and making sure that they feel safe in their homes, in their communities, that they do not have to leave our district in order to feel safe, that they don't have to stay in the house when it becomes dark or when the streetlights come on. And so I think as Commissioner, it is vital to create a partnership with the police department. It is vital to have dialogue with the police chief and the majors and all these key people. One thing I learned about the city is the same police officers monitor the same areas. And so if you can build a relationship with these officers that are going to work it four, five, six times a week, then now it is a completely different dynamic to where they're learning these individuals by name, where they're learning these community members by name, where the neighbors are waving at the officers and not feeling tense when they come in. And so I believe it's our job as Commissioner to bridge that gap and to make sure that everyone is seen, everyone is heard, everyone knows that the police is there to do their job, and if you do something wrong, they're going to do their job.
Right.
And the community is going to support the police officers that's doing their job. But on the flip side, if officer is not doing their job, we're going to make sure we go to the right chain of command to say, hey, this officer did such and such. And I believe our police chief and I believe the majors that are working in the police office, I believe that they care about our community and that they will hear our constituents in those areas. And so I believe by providing public safety for both sides and making sure that no one feels not seen or not heard or feel equal, I think that's a part of it. Bridging the gap, knowing that they are here to provide safety and public safety is important.
How do you plan to address mental health issues and substance abuse within the district?
So we are seeing a rise on mental issues, I just think citywide, honestly. I think it's vital, especially when we're talking about poverty, when we're talking about issues in regards to that, we see that a lot of it stems sometimes from substance abuse and/or mental disorders. And so then you have to answer the question, is it they don't have access to the treatment? Or is it they cannot afford a treatment? Or if they simply don't want the treatment? And those, all three are questions that have to be answered. You know, we have Spectre Care here who specializes in mental disorders. But if they don't have the resources in order to enroll in Spectre Care, if they don't have the funding, they don't have the Medicare, the Medicaid, whatever the case may be, then there is no access to it, even if they're desiring to access it. And so I believe again, you know, we have to make sure we're providing access to individuals that may not be able to afford it. What does that look like? Does that mean that we're seeking out grants to fund it? Does that mean that we're coming up with a one-day clinic strictly for individuals that fall under that cap? You know, getting creative with resolving these issues. I don't think it's a one-person thing. I don't even know if it's a city's job to do it, but it's our job to make the connection or connect the resources to our constituents. And so no, the city may not say that we're going to take this on and we're going to provide mental health technicians. No, but Spectre Care specializes in it. Okay, what funds can we pour into Spectre Care? How can we make sure Spectre Care is accessible to these individuals? Does that mean that we're opening up our rec centers one time a week for them to come to the rec centers because it's walking distance? Does that mean that we're connecting to different community partners? And so I think that it's our job to connect them to the resource, not to create a stable place for the resolution of the mental or the substance abuse. And so I think as Commissioner, it's connecting those resources when it comes to that issue, not being the answer for the issue.
What is your plan to improve the city's infrastructure?
So I think number one, bringing awareness. So what most people have to understand, like when we're seeing roads being done and we're seeing things being fixed and that nature, most times that was done or prepared for two years before we see it. And so when it comes to being Commissioner for District 2, my job is to make sure I'm at those tables, making sure that I'm talking to planning and making sure I'm talking to the individuals that are allocating those funds so that they see our needs that are in District 2. I think if they're not made aware of our needs, they're going to find somewhere for those funds to go. And so when we're talking about the infrastructure, we're talking about making sure that our roads are repaired when they are messed up. We should not have potholes in our district for months at a time. Those are things that the city takes care of. And so I think it simply is communicating the need, making sure that we are seen, making sure that our needs are seen, making sure our needs are prioritized, and fighting for those funds. Because there's only so many dollars that goes towards this, whether that is from the city, whether that is from the state, whether that is from the federal level, there are only so much funding. And so making sure again, that there is someone advocating for those funds. We need this in order to make our community better. And so I think that's my job as District 2 Commissioner. I think that's how I fight for infrastructure repairs, is making sure that the needs are seen, the needs are heard, and that someone's advocating at the table.
How do you plan to improve traffic congestion and making transportation options more available to residents?
So I think that is a city-wide issue when we talk about transportation. We have a bus system that does the best that they can. The issue is, a lot of people don't know, most times with Wiregrass Transit, you have to schedule your ride two weeks in advance.
I didn't know that.
So if you're working and you don't get your schedule two weeks in advance, how do you do it? That accessibility becomes an issue. And so I think as a city and a county, we're going to have to come together and figure out what's the resolution for that. I know that public transportation is expensive. But is it going to provide better resources? If we make this investment, will we see a return on our investment? Will we see unemployment go down? Will we see crime rate go down because now people are working? Because they don't have to do illegal activities in order to provide. And so again, I think sometimes it's a catch-22. And so with the transportation issue, we're going to have to sit at the table and find a resolution. Is public transportation the resolution? Is us expanding the Wiregrass Transportation the resolution? We have to figure out what the resolution is. And if we can figure out the resolution, I believe that we will see an increase of economic development. Because again, if I can get to the job, I'll work it. And if I can work it, I can get a paycheck. If I can get a paycheck, I can put it back into the community. And again, those dollars are beginning to circulate. And so I think it's a bigger question than just the city, just the District 2 Commissioner. But it has to be a city-county partnership that comes about in order to resolve that transportation issue.
Yes. What initiatives will you introduce to make the city more pedestrian-friendly?
So something I'm already trying to push is bounce-back neighborhood, where we bring pride back to our neighborhood. And so when we're talking about having value or an investment in our neighborhoods, understanding that this is our community, that we must take care of our community, that includes our sidewalks, that includes our public parks, that includes our recreation center. And so understanding that we're bouncing back, that what we see does not have to always be, that we have to first find value in our community so that the city will find value in our community and pour funds in the community. It's difficult to justify funding if you're not going to take care of it.
Yeah.
It's difficult to justify funding if they provide a new park and then within six months is broken. And so again, pushing that bounce-back neighborhood, which is shifting a mentality that this is our neighborhood, it is beautiful, it is kind, it gives us what we give it. And so whatever you put into it, you'll get in return. And so that's the initiative that I'm really trying to push. I was in partnership with Park Chapel AM Church, which is off of East Selma. And they've had a basketball court that have been down for, honestly, as long as I've been alive. And so we received a grant for $65,000 and we're about to bounce back the neighborhood. We're about to redo that basketball court to make it accessible again for our community. Those are the type of initiatives that we're trying to push in the community as a whole, that again, what you put into it will return to you.
What is your plan to increase affordable housing and address homelessness within your community?
So when we look at housing as far as District 2, if you ride around any neighborhood, you see a lot of vacant houses. You see a lot of boarded-up houses, whether the individual stays here, whether they just own the property. I believe as a city and as a District 2 Commissioner, we have to begin to create some type of incentives in order for these houses to be brought back up to code. We don't want the houses tore down. We don't want them boarded up, but we want them utilized. And so I believe in creating an incentive program, what that looks like, do not know. But figuring out an incentive program that is created for these house owners to bring them back up to code. Whether that is giving them tax write-offs, whether that is giving them X amount of funds in order to bring it back up to code, whether that's giving them funds if the individual breaks the house. You know, again, sometimes we have to figure out how to get these owners back invested in those homes in District 2. And if you ask any homeowner, they're worried about someone messing up their house. They're worrying about someone not valuing it and them leaving it destroyed, and now they have to come in. And so if we can give them some type of peace of mind in that regard, I believe that it will cause a domino effect for those homeowners. I think the bigger picture though with affordable housing is, what does that look like with our city right now? With us redoing downtown and downtown beginning to expand, I believe that it's going to be a domino effect of rent increasing. The average rent right now is anywhere between $700 and $900 in a lower end area. If you go anywhere decent, it's $1,200 easily. And so the question is, what is affordable? If I'm making $8 an hour and I'm working 40 hours a week, I can't afford $900 rent, it's just not realistic. If I'm making $15 an hour, working 40 hours a week, I can't afford $1,200. And it's just unrealistic. And so I think as a city, we have to figure out, what are we considering affordable? What are we doing to fight back that happening to where our people cannot afford to stay in homes? Because when they cannot afford to stay in homes, they end up homeless. I'm the Executive Director of the Harbor, and so all we do is deal with homeless individuals and low-income individuals. Well, I have individuals who work but cannot afford a house because they need to make three times the rent. I have individuals who can't work that are on disability, but there is no housing for them that they can afford. And so as a city, we have to come together and figure out, how do we put these pieces together? How do we bring resolution without overreaching our power? Because we don't want to dictate to the owner of the house, you have to charge this amount or you cannot go over that cap. That's overreach. But at the same time, we have to regulate and see what is affordable, what are we doing to combat it? Does the city need to build some apartments? Or does downtown redevelopment need to do something, you know, what that looks like? I don't have the full answer. But I think we have to start making steps and having these conversations and not ignoring it. Because again, the downtown area is moving. It is shifting. It is becoming very beautiful and thriving and wonderful. But if we're not careful, on the back end, we will see where this influx of rent and homeownership to where it's not affordable. And when it's not affordable, either people will leave or you will have a stronger or bigger homeless community.
How will you ensure that new development projects are sustainable and benefit the entire population?
So you know, with the downtown redevelopment, the objective is to create a thriving downtown, which in return will create revenue. That's the expectation. So I think it's vital to make sure that when we're receiving the revenue, that we are retaining so much to make sure that the upkeep of it is maintained. And so as Commissioner, you know, again, that is something that I will push for. When we're talking about accessibility to everyone, I think the reality of it is, they may not have full access to it. But again, fighting for the funds of the revenue that is coming from those, from the downtown redevelopment. And so when it comes to the New Civic Center, when it comes to the Opera House, when it comes to all of those things, making sure that as Commissioner, we're getting our piece of the pie. We are getting some of the revenue in order to build up our communities. And so again, I think accessibility is important. I think access is important. But I think revenue is important just as well. And so again, making sure that my voice is being heard for my constituents, making sure that I'm communicating to my constituents what's going on, making sure that I know what they want. I do not want to fight a battle of something that our constituents don't want. And so if they don't want it, I'm not fighting for it. But if it's something that is important and vital to them, I think that it should be fought for. And so when we're talking about the facilities and we're talking about the redevelopment and we're talking about all this access, I think the revenue is going to be the most important thing, making sure that we're getting a piece of the pie, that we are pouring it back into our communities to beautify our district.
What programs or partnerships will you establish to assist those dealing with housing insecurity?
So I truly believe we have some amazing organizations here in Dothan who are already the answer to some of those problems. Again, I'm just not saying that because I'm the Executive Director of the Harbor. But we have places like Seach, we have places like Love and Action. We have organizations that job is to try to empower these individuals. And so I believe as a sitting Commissioner, I will be advocating for funding for that, advocating for funding for these programs so that they can be expanded, so that they can be effective. A lot of times in the nonprofit world, you're fighting for funding. We're all fighting for the same donors. We're all fighting for the same grants. And so imagine a city that will say, you know, okay, we're going to allot just $100,000. I can tell you, that would be amazing and a huge answer to some of the issues that we're seeing. If they can allot $50,000 and say, hey, we're going to give this access to these organizations that help with homelessness. Because here's what it boils down to. If we have a high number of homeless in our community and they are gravitating downtown and they are gravitating in big areas, people are not going to come. They're not going to feel safe. They're not going to feel comfortable. And so by you allotting or making an investment of this $100,000 or $50,000 or whatever that number is, I'm just throwing a number out there. But by you making a decision to make this investment, to assist with this huge investment, I think it's worth it. And so I think as a sitting Commissioner, with someone with experience with the homelessness and with individuals that are fighting against homeless, that I will be advocating for that at the table, talking to my fellow Commissioners and Mayor to explain, hey, this is a need that we have, this is a concern that we have, and this will help the bigger picture, not just of one population.
How will you manage the city's budget to ensure fiscal responsibility while funding essential services?
So I think that is a huge thing as a Commissioner, is to know where the dollars are going. Again, as a Commissioner, you are fighting not only for the city but for your district. And so making sure that funds are not being wasted, making sure that those that are receiving funds are doing what they're supposed to do with those funds, and not just passing it or pushing it through just to get along. That's something that I'm not afraid of is confrontation. And I think a lot of individuals know that. I'm very straightforward and I ask questions. I don't just do stuff just because we've always done it. And so as a sitting Commissioner, and I will ask the whys. Why are we funding this? Why so much? Where is it going? How is it being spent? Who's deciding where it's being spent? And so by doing that, we're being accountable for our budget, we're being accountable for those dollars. And then coming back to my constituents and saying, hey, this is where the money is going. Because a lot of times, it's not that it's being spent wrongly. No one's articulating the why, why we're giving X organization so much. Like one of the biggest things that, you know, not concerned me, but made a, you know, a little red flag, we were giving so much money to Fort Rooker. And so this was maybe four years ago and I was like, well, why are we giving X amount of dollars to Fort Rooker? Where the response was, partnership. They bring out military families. Well, military families normally live either Enterprise or Dothan, and they travel to Fort Rooker. And so creating this Wiregrass mentality of partnership, that's the why. But if no one ever explains that this is an investment that we're getting in return on, no one knows. And so I think again, just making sure that every dollar is counted, making sure that it's communicated to our constituents, and making sure you're not just being a yes man, but you're asking those why questions.
What is your approach to managing the city's debt and do you plan on implementing any new taxes?
So transparency, our commission has been very conservative, which is a good thing. I mean, you know, they haven't really made any tough or bad decisions. I think the biggest thing that they're doing now is City Hall, which at the end of the day, it's necessary. Whether, you know, people feel like, well, those funds can go here or they can go there. The City Hall is necessary if we're going to continue to thrive. And so I think the Commission has done a really good job in that regard. When we're talking about taxes, we look at the tax bracket when it comes to our property tax, which is the lowest, lowest in Alabama. And the question we have to begin to ask ourselves is the why, okay? We know that a lot of our tax funds go to or should go to the education system. When we look at our scores and we look at our A-CAP scores... When we look at our scores and we look at our A-CAP scores and we look at where we're ranked and the scoring and the testing, we're extremely low. When we look at our school system, it's in a challenging season right now and a huge transition. And so I'm not opposed to us entertaining the conversation. We can't, we can't make the decision. It's the county that makes the decision. But I'm not opposed to the entertaining of the conversation, even if it's two cent, five cent, whatever that percentage may be. Because again, the revenue adds up. My only thing is, if we do it, which whoever's listening may not like this, if we do it, it needs to be earmarked specifically for education. These funds should not be discretionary funds to where the commission or the city can spend it wherever. It needs to be earmarked that these funds go to the education system. And if it is not that, I'm not in agreement. But if it is, then I would entertain the conversation of doing it. And again, if this happens, it has to, the commission has to, it has to go through the commission, and then it has to be put on the ballot, and then we still have to vote on it. And so it's still the people's choice, but I think it should be entertained.
How will you balance the need for economic development with responsible budgeting?
So I think that kind of bounces back to the previous question. You know, we want our economy thriving. We want it to be flourishing. We want individuals to buy local. And so I think as a, again, District Two Commissioner, making sure those monies are being spent well. It's all about receiving and investing back. As long as we keep investing back into our economy, it will keep investing back into us. Again, it's that circle method, Ross Clark Circle, you know, it's that circle method. And so again, as a sitting commissioner, I think it's vital that we checks and balances. Making sure that we are balancing our checkbook, making sure that we are making wise investments. And I believe that any investment that we make will get a return on it.
What steps would you take to make the city more environmentally sustainable?
So I think the environment is a huge, huge thing, and it's really beginning to grow, I think, in every community. I think, again, access is important. And when we're talking about access, I'm talking about fruits, vegetables, healthy foods, things of that nature. Well, when we talk about environment, we're talking about gardens, we're talking about planting trees, we're talking about all these things. I believe that really every district should have some type of community garden. Aunt Katie's Garden is a beautiful, beautiful thing where individuals can come, access fresh fruits and fresh vegetables right downtown. And so making this accessible to every district and every community, I think is important. So like, I've already been in talks with an individual that does a program like that. I'm like, hey, can you come to this district? Like, we have a lot that is ready, like, we can teach the youth in the area, turn it into a programming. Now, this is bridging the gap. Where you can get the elderly people that already love gardening, connected with the younger people that are just looking for something to put their hands on. Bridging that gap to build a community that will, in return, help the environment, I think will be a domino effect.
How do you plan to address waste management, renewable energy, and climate resilience?
So with those three topics, I I do believe education is going to be the biggest connect with that. When it comes to individuals, they have to be educated on what is waste management. What does it look like? How do we protect our environment? How do we make sure we're not putting the wrong things in our trash can? How do we make sure we're not polluting the air or, you know, the water or, you know, anything of that nature? And so I believe education is going to be the key point of that. As a commissioner, pursuing to be commissioner, my desire is to do something monthly at the community center, where we're providing a hot meal, community comes together and provides something educational. And so I think that would be something that I would implement in one of those educational parts, is teaching District Two or teaching individuals, what does it look like to help our community? What does it look like to save energy? When it comes to the housing crisis, like you said, most of District Two is most likely renting. They don't own their homes. And so there is a weatherization program that Habitat for Humanity normally does for homeowners, where they come in and they change out their windows and it saves energy. Well, it's only for homeowners that are living in their home. And so I've already been working on figuring out, how can we expand that to individuals that own the home but are renting them? Because, again, saving energy is saving money. And so working on trying to figure out what that looks like, what funding we can use for it. And so that's something that we're already working on, just behind the scenes. And so preferably, again, by bringing that education, by bringing those type of programs, I think will be a domino effect to help our environment and community.
How will you ensure that all residents have access to quality healthcare services?
So I think that question is a bigger answer, right? The reality is, if they don't have insurance, they don't have access to healthcare. And so the Love and Action, which is another organization that helps homeless and low income, they do a Good Samaritan clinic every week. And so what does that look like? Does that mean that we're accessing transportation in order to get them there? Does that mean that we are trying to create a portable Good Samaritan clinic? You know, what does that look like? And so I think that is something that we're going to have to bring to the table as a community to figure out, how do we answer that? And a lot of times, you know, individuals that are on Medicare and Medicaid, their offices are so backed up for those that accept that kind of healthcare, that it may be six months out or a year out before they can even get an appointment. And so again, accessibility is the issue. And so I think as a community, we're going to have to come together in order to answer that question, how do we make it more accessible? There are kids, we do a lot of work with the school system. And there, I seen a little girl who mouth was literally rotten out. What does that look like health-wise? What does that look like mental-wise? She has to be getting picked on, which is causing a trauma. She's only like nine, and so it is the parent's responsibility to get her that access, but if the parent doesn't have access to it, and then transparency, we looked into getting her help. Well, the closest place that had an immediate opening was Selma. So having to drop to Selma, Alabama, now, if we didn't help, that mother wasn't going to be able to get there. And so again, I wish there was one answer. I wish there was just a easy wave of the wand and here's the solution. But I think with this problem, we're going to have to come together as a community.
What measures would you take to increase mental health services in the city?
So again, I think we have a lot of organizations that already do it. And so I believe just providing them more resources and maximizing their already strong reach. That means sitting down with the CEO, that means sitting down with the technicians and saying, hey, what are the barriers that you're seeing? What are you seeing in our community? What are the patterns that you're seeing in our community? A lot of people do not know that they're having mental issues or battling trauma because they can't even define trauma. And so when you define it, they're like, oh, well, I went through something similar. Like, I grew up in this type of environment, and they thought, you know, the way they are is normal. And so again, by expanding these resources, you bring more light to that darkness to where they can reach out and get help, get resolution, which brings about a better community.
What is your plan for dealing with public health emergencies like pandemics or natural disasters?
So we have a amazing EMA director. He is doing a phenomenal job. The Harbor partners with many organizations in order to already resolve those type of things that occur, you know, natural emergencies, whatever the case may be. And so I believe as a sitting commissioner is making sure that, again, resources are provided for our constituents when these things happen. Like when the random tornado just came through and hit DPA. As an individual and some community partners, we came together and we were out there taking trees off of individuals' houses, cutting them down, putting them on the side of the road. Now, as a commissioner, is that your job? Of course not. But when someone in your community is hurting, you need to try to bring a resolution or some type of answer. And so what my answer was, getting some partners to be able to take care of it, but not only getting those partners, but putting my hand to the plow as well. And so I believe that we have to be at the forefront of the emergencies. And you've seen that the mayor was out there at DPA, making sure that individuals, okay, you've seen different commissioners out there. That's our job, to be there when our constituents need us, to be there in their time of need. And so when emergencies happen, we should be there.
How will you make city government more accessible and encourage public engagement in decision-making?
So I think that it's multiple layers to this, right? So when we're talking about engagement, we're talking about communication. We're talking about getting people involved. It's difficult to get people involved when they do not know. And so I think as, like, one of the things that I've already talked about doing as District Two Commissioner is social media. After every commission meeting, coming on social media, on the commissioner's page, and giving them a very small synopsis of what has occurred. Again, you know, somebody's like, well, that's small. No, it's accessible. So that I may not have time to sit through a three-hour commission meeting, but I can watch a three-minute video that gives me a rundown of what's going on. Another thing is monthly meetings. So bringing about monthly meetings to my constituents where it's the same day every month. So being able to say, every first Monday, we're going to meet at Wiregrass, I'm going to have a dinner, you come and bring your concerns. Not only that, but because it's consistent, now you can send out like a newsletter to all of the constituents that they can have every first Monday. So again, a biggest thing that when, as I've been campaigning and canvassing, they're saying that I don't have social media. I don't have access to the internet. So we have to bring them that access, whether that's a piece of mail, whether that is canvassing again, you know, whatever that looks like. And so I think by making it accessible, looks like bringing about communication, connecting the dots, bridging the gaps, and giving them an opportunity to come together and to voice their opinions and simply being accessible. That means responding to emails, that means answering calls. You are the voice of the people. And if the people cannot get in contact with you, then you're not the voice. You're just sitting in a seat, taking care of your needs. And so I believe that those are the things that I would do as a sitting commissioner, answering my phone, responding to emails, being accessible, sending out mail invites to these city, to these town hall meetings, and then doing the social media thing.
What steps will you take to ensure that everyone within your community has an equal voice?
So, you know, when we're talking about community, it is vital to understand, number one, that everyone has a voice. As a sitting commissioner, that means even if I don't agree with it, you're still my constituent. Which means I still need to sit down and have a conversation and have dialogue. And what I'm learning, you know, and have learnt in the corporate world and with my wife and with my kids, sometimes they just want to be heard. Sometimes I just want you to hear how I'm feeling, what I'm seeing, not that you're able to fix it, not that you're able to wave your magic wand. And so when it comes to letting each constituent know their voice is being heard, that is simply taking time and listening. That I'm not always trying to give a response, I'm not always trying to give an answer. And sometimes I'm listening, taking notes, and it's going to tell you, I'm going to get back with you. Or I'm going to say, hey, I can't fix this, but I'm going to give you instructions on who can and give you connected to the individuals that can. So like, like as a commissioner, you know, you may get so many complaints. Well, they forgot to pick up my trash. There's nothing I can do about that. But guess what? We have a whole department that handles trash. And they have beautiful cameras that can pull up and see, why did they skip your trash can? Was it because it wasn't out there? Was it because it was just an oversight? Whatever the answer is, we have a department that can handle that. And so as you're coming to me as someone that is a constituent, I may can't answer it, but guess what? I'm going to give you the connection to the department that can handle it. And so again, I think making sure that we are listening, not to respond, that if it is something that we can bring resolution to, that we are making those connections, and that we're doing the best we can as a commissioner. We're not perfect. We don't have all the answers. But when you feel that you're heard and you feel that you're appreciated, and you feel as your voice is being advocated, I think, you know, that's the resolution.
What steps will you take to increase transparency in local government and spending?
So I think the beautiful thing that some people do not know about our city is, everything is public. Every contract that is signed has to go through the commission, which means it has to be put on the agenda, which means the attachment has to be a part of it. Again, I just think sometimes we do not do a good job with bringing it or telling our constituents about it. Again, a lot of people don't have time to go research, to find this information. A lot of people don't have time to take out their time to go to the commission meeting. And so I believe by creating this social media platform and these meetings, we're able to disclose this information there. That, hey, these are the contracts that we approved. Hey, this is the allocation of the budget. Hey, this is where the funds are going. Transparency is the key. These are our constituents' dollars. This is our constituent city. Every commission seat, including the mayor, is voted on by the community. And so it's their job to represent us, and we have to make sure that we know what's going on. And so as District Two Commissioner, if elected, I will make sure that those things are communicated, the budget, the funding, the contracts, whatever's going on, whatever's being approved, I'm going to make sure I communicate that to my constituents.
How would you make sure that your administration is being held accountable?
Checks and balances. So, so again, you know, the commission is the oversight of the city. You have department heads that are actually moving the pieces in the city. We have a city manager who is the oversight of those department heads. And so I believe that when we're talking about accountability and administration, we're making sure that our city manager is accountable to the commission. The city manager is making sure his department heads are accountable to him. So when anything goes on, we're saying, hey, city manager, can you check into this? Hey, city manager, can you follow up, follow up on this issue? And it's his job to follow up and get back with us. And so I think by doing that, staying within our authority, but making sure that we're actually checking in, that we're just not letting the city run on autopilot. That whatever comes before us, approve, 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 nope. We're actually looking at it, we're actually reading it, we're actually asking questions. And I think by doing that, we make for a better city and more accountable administration.
What would you do to prevent corruption and maintain integrity within the the city government?
So I kind of think the same thing, making sure we hold everyone accountable. We should not let anything go under our radar without asking questions with any ordinance, with any policy that is being put in, put in place. One of the biggest frustrations that I have is when we approve something or decline something, and there is no explanation. There is no public dialogue so that we understand why this was not a good idea or why this was not a bad idea. Now, someone who's sitting on the outside, we have a lot of zoning changes that goes on for properties. We have no clue why this is zoned for A and not C. We have no clue what it means when it shifts from A to C. And there's nobody bringing clarification and no shots at the commission. I'm wondering if they know. Like, do you know what you're approving? Do you know why it was zoned for this and why this is vital and why we should not combine these two plots? Like, are you asking those questions? Like, are you asking those questions, or are you saying, well, you know how to do your job, so I'm just gonna approve it? Instead of saying, hey, explain to me what does it mean to be zoned for this? And what does it mean to be zoned for this? And why we don't want this zone for this? And so I think it's just stuff like that, that if we're not careful, it will be running on autopilot, and everyone will be doing what they wanna do with no correction. And that is where corruption slips in.
Yeah.
Where there is no accountability, no one's asking any questions, no one is concerned. We're just stamping our name and keep it moving.
Yeah. So why are you running for Commissioner's seat too? And what do you hope to accomplish while you're in office?
So it's a simple answer. I love my district. Um, I truly love District Two. I have um, done work in District Two um, for years. Um, I wanna see my district be better. Um, we are moving in the right direction, um, but there is so much more that can be done. Um, I wanna make sure that we are getting a fair shot. Our constituents are getting a fair shot. Our children are getting a fair shot. Um, one thing that really breaks my heart is like, our city pool for District Two has been down for two years. And when we look at that and we look at our youth, and with uh, uh, things beginning to happen, when they have nothing to do, they get in trouble.
Yeah.
They have nothing to do. The one part or area that they had has been down for two years. And no one is concerned, whether it's lack of funding, no one's communicating it. No one's saying, hey, we're gonna open this up for them since this is down. And so those are the issues that break my heart, that who's looking out for the underdog? And I consider District Two the underdog. That I will be the voice, I will be the one to go to bat, I will be the one to have the conversation. I will be the one that says, I see you, I love you, I live here, this is my community, and we will not go down without a fight. And so that's where I'm running for District Two, to be the voice of District Two, to advocate for District Two, to get funding into, for District Two, and to have a thriving District Two. We will bounce back as a neighborhood.
What would you say are the best skills, um, experience and leadership qualities that make you the best candidate?
So I've been an advocate um, in general for years. Um, I have advocated for District Two specifically, I've advocated um, for the homeless. Um, I'm currently on the, the uh, Board of Directors for the Alpha Saliba Family Services. Um, I am on the Board for Early Head Start, I am on the Board for the Art Museum. Making our city better is my whole mission and desire. Um, I grew up with my mother working in the nonprofit world. She used to run Habitat for Humanity before she transitioned. And the love that she had trickled down to her son. And the love that I have for my city has continued to grow. And so proven leadership, stopping the liquor store from coming to our community, hat, hosting and facilitating town halls, connecting with our uh, police chief and our mayor, I mean, major, uh, uh, connecting with our uh, DPA principal, making sure that they have everything they need, connecting with organizations like Time Youth, making sure he has everything that he needs. So connecting those dots have always been what I've done, I've just done it in secret. Never really making it public, never really trying to be seen. And so this is the moment now where I'm saying, okay, let's get our hands to the plow even more, and let's do it publicly. Let's be a voice at the table. Let's be in the seat of decision-making and not just working behind the scenes. And so really, my work is proven, and I tell the people all the time, even if I do not get elected, the work doesn't stop. And, and that's my issue with a lot of people who are now popping up. Where have you been the last four years, the last eight years, the last 10 years? We can't just pop up when it's election time, but have you been doing the work? And if you lose, will you continue to do the work? Because our priorities are our priorities, and our city needs us.
How do you plan to work with city council, local businesses, and community organizations to implement your agenda?
So, and I say this to the commissioners, I say this to the small businesses, I say this to the, the community, I need you. I cannot do anything I'm desiring without you. Um, it's going to take every commissioner, every small business, and every community member in order to bring this agenda forth. And the reality is, if one piece is missing, it's gonna be very difficult. Um, one person cannot flip a city. But when you start having the arms and the hands and the feet and the legs, and all of it coming together, now that's a different story. And so as a commission, nothing can be approved unless you have enough votes. So I need you as the commissioner. As small businesses, you are the heartbeat of our community. If every small business was to pull out of Dothan, Dothan would not be able to survive. So we need you, the community members, we need you. And so my desire is to see a united front to where they are able to come to the table and have conversations, um, and have dialogue. And when we're talking about our community, we're talking about pastors, we're talking about um, um, small business owners, we're talking about, maybe you're the neighborhood watch uh, 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 captain, who knows? But, but those people with key roles in the community coming to a table and saying, hey, this is what our people are saying, this is what we need. And so when we're talking about building this agenda and mapping out and making District Two, um, we need everyone coming together. Um, unity brings strength. Division brings destruction. And so if we can come together in unity and see that when one part of our district or city hurts, the whole district or city hurts. Like, you are no better than the least. And so if we can get our people to change their mentality, if we can get our people to find value in their community and to love their community by coming together, I believe that we can bring that agenda forth. And so I need you, your community needs you, your city needs you, to come together as one.
Wow, that was a very good answer. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
For coming by and talking to me, and the best of luck on your elections.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.